Call this regular city council meeting to order on November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five at six oh two P M. Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Mr. Bateman?
Present.
Mrs. McCullin?
Present.
Mr. Parrott?
Present.
Mr. Downs?
Present.
Mr. Clemmons?
Present.
Mrs. Donnie?
Present.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up this evening is public participation. We do have a couple speaker cards. So first up this evening is Lynette Bruce. Lynette, would you like to step forward, please?
Yes, thank you. Thank you to all. Well, wasn't that a great entrance? Thank you. Thank you to all city councilmen and women. I do appreciate this opportunity to speak to you. I actually live in the county, but I do have three pieces of property that I own as I'm the managing member of the Bud Barrens LLC.
Lynette, before we go further, I didn't mention on there the topic is the massage parlor topic. So for the council's awareness, that's what she's here to speak with us about.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, please proceed.
No, thank you. And so one is at fifteen fifty-five Fifth Street, which is on the corner. Then I have Public Aid, and across from that is the USDA, and then the vacant lot that was the gas station. And at fifteen fifty-five Fifth Street, it has been numerous things over the years. It's been a hair salon. It's been tanning booths. It's been actually the tourism, economic development and that group. And then it went into also now Jackie Camel was there with hair dressing, and we have now worked it into a collaboration of like-minded people that provide massage therapy, Reiki. They provide Pilates, and that's, that's pretty much it. It's more of a health industry. And I just found out that this vote was coming up tonight with everyone on the massage establishment. I did read through it. I read through it a couple times. I certainly am here to support the massage therapists and some of their concerns that they have with the wording. And I, as a landlord, I mean, I am very concerned with some of the language. I feel as though it's, it's going to be an option of me telling people they can't rent from me because I don't want to go through all the stuff that's required. I, I, my building is in good shape. It has restrooms. It's met with a fire code. It's done everything. We have licensed people that come in. I do a lease. I, I personally don't believe that you are entitled to information like my lease. I don't think that you really should, I should have to submit all the documentation that you are requiring. I, however, do believe there is a compromise because I think that I and our massage therapists that are practicing here have the same concerns that you do. They're licensed. They're professionals. They do not want to have any stigma to their professional, profession either. And so I can't, I cannot take credit for this, but the next speaker, Joyce, had reached out to her peers in Bloomington, and they have gone through this same process where they met with people that this would impact, which would be the massage people, body works people, landlords, and they came up with another category, sole proprietorship, that I think is the answer or the solution to what is being presented at this time. I, I truly believe that we all could live with that, that, that are affected by this. And I'm just asking for you to please table your vote tonight. And if you would please allow us an opportunity to visit with each and every one of you to discuss what the specific concerns are. I've kind of highlighted mine. As a landlord, I'm concerned I'm going to have empty rooms in a building because I think it's going to impact me being able to rent space. And I, I would just ask that you respectfully consider that in my comments this evening in your decision whether to vote or not. And again, thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
Before she steps away, does the council have any questions? Mr. Parrott?
Can you just, one specific that you're concerned about and share, would your businesses that lease from you, would, would they, are they talking about going to another city or?
They, honestly, because we learned about it Wednesday, we've been rallying the troops from Thursday, Friday, and I was in Wisconsin from Friday to this afternoon. So we talked about what specifically we didn't like, but we really haven't had time to sit down in detail. I focused on, I did go through it, and I think that this, the idea of the requirements of. My concern is from the massages professionalism, they're requiring all the things that are supposedly happening here. You have to have background check. You have to have fingerprinting and all that. And I, I feel like that's one of the things, just as a person that's sitting aside and looking in, would be, have an issue with. Me, I think that all the things you're asking for, bathrooms and a floor plan, a copy of the lease, where, where things are supposed to be posted and they're supposed to be being available. I honestly, personally, don't have a problem if law enforcement ever wants to come into the building. I, I, I don't have a problem with that because we meet all the codes and standards. And I, I, that's my concern, is that all the things that are required of the building, that even though I am probably, I'm compliant in everything, I just think it oversteps the boundaries of everybody that's sitting here. I think it, it offended me, quite frankly, that you're, you're just a little bit too nosey.
We appreciate you, you coming to bring in concerns. Just a couple follow-ups, not with you necessarily, one with our chief of police. Have we had any issues with any ideas of any massages that weren't professional here in the city?
Yes, we conducted an investigation into a legal massage parlor just last, last year, early, early this year, sorry, began in January of two thousand and twenty-five. This business was not licensed through the Illinois Department of Professional Regulations. The employees providing massage therapy, if you want to call it that, were not licensed either. They had no professional certificates or, or education documents to show that that was the services that they were certified to provide. That business was successfully shut down through the court process, working with the city attorney and our local court.
And then a quick question for the city attorney. So some of, I, I believe some massages are performed maybe in chiropractic care as well. It does seem a little bit of an overreach to ask for fingerprints and things of that nature. Unless, do our chiropractors, do they get fingerprints or anything like that as well?
Chiropractic, chiropractic offices are exempt in this ordinance that I proffered. I have a number of exemptions. Like say for a hospital, nursing home, medical facilities, surgeons, chiropractors, osteopaths, podiatrists, things of that, things of that nature, physical therapists, no, within their, athletic trainers, said barbers, cosmetologists, who will only provide massage services to the neck, back, face, scalp, hair, hands, feet, you know, things of that nature. It's all, being a little pet up here, but it, there, there is a number of exemptions based there. I, when I sent this to you guys, I did say in my email, I said, this was based, you know, this was, you know, based upon other municipalities that have passed. And I said, this is a little bit more in-depth, even at the email I sent you guys. I said, this is a little bit more in-depth than what we usually have. I acknowledge that to y'all when I sent it to you, with the idea being that there's, if there was problems with it, we could always cut things down, so to speak. So, you know, you know, if it is problematic, but I did acknowledge that this is a little bit more in-depth than some of the other ones that we have here within the city of Lincoln.
Other questions for Lynette? Okay. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Do you have a approximate idea how many massage therapists there are in the city of Lincoln?
We, Joyce and I were talking about that, maybe three or four that we are aware of that are doing business now. I think Blades has one person still. I think there's Laura Duffer is down, I'm not, I can't remember which facility she's at. And then I have one person in my building and a prospect of another one in January that I'm communicating with now, who is not certain they want to come in now because of what's, what the regulations are going to be. So.
Thank you.
It's not a lot of people. And I, I use a massage therapist every two weeks. So I have, I have another stake in it because I really want it.
I think Julianne Popisch does it as well.
Does she?
Yeah. Ms. McCullin?
So would you say that most of your reservations are about the facility, about changes you might have to make in the facility, or do you think, or is that?
I, I feel like it's just intrusive, what you're asking for a landlord or a person with the facility to comply with. And my other thing is, these people are licensed by the state of Illinois. They have a license. I require them to be insured when they come in. And they're fingerprinted and there are everything that's being requested of them through their certification or their licensing. And so I have that issue with them, and then I have my issue with as a landlord. I just feel like it's a burden to me. And it's, it overreaches what I should have to do to let someone else rent a room in my building. I, I just feel like it's, it's excessive. I've never had to come up with something like that.
So they already have fingerprints taken and things like that? They already have background checks?
I looked up online and I went through it. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to over, speak over you. I apologize.
That's okay. So they, and they've already had background checks and they've already had all of that?
That's all required by, I have a list of everything that is required by the state for the licensing, and that's part of it, yes.
Chief Minister?
This question is for the city attorney, not relative to the question at hand regarding landlords and owning business like that. But with the ordinance itself, is there a requirement for a licensed massage therapist that's gone through the state of Illinois, done the background check, the fingerprints, and all, all those things to do that all over again? Or does that, that initial background check that they went through to receive their license from the state satisfy the requirements of our, of the ordinance proposed?
It should satisfy the requirements of the ordinance. I can go back and reassert that, you know, that language, if it needs to be fluffed, so to speak, and, you know, and changed. But one of the things we do have there is that I believe it's part eleven of the, of the ordinance that requires massage therapists, you know, to, to be licensed, you know, and to provide said license. So.
And may I add to, it's yearly. They have to be.
Yeah, I understand it is yearly.
Do you have to, do you have to apply yearly or is it every two years? So I have to reapply every two years for my license, and then there's a background check that comes with it, and they do all of the background checks again and all of them.
This says yearly.
So they do theirs yearly.
Well, the, the proposed massage establishment says yearly.
This is strictly my opinion, but to double down on a, on a person that's already paid the money and gone through the background check process would seem an overreach, in my opinion.
Because they also have to update their license. So it's a, it's an updating process that has to be continually updated too. So it's not just like, once you have a license, you have a license. You still have to go back. I'm going to guess it's every two years. They have to go back and, and pay for a new license and have all of their background checks done and do everything and make sure that they have all of their education done as well.
Yeah, they should be able to provide copy of the background check to us on application. So, Mr. Parrott?
So then do you require then for, for this part of your business that you lease, that, that they document that they are up on their license renewal before you would have a, a lease agreement with them?
I want to see the lease and I want to have a proof of insurance. And then I, I can set it for yearly or a year and then continuation. So I have not put that specific information in the lease as a requirement. I can do that, though, and update and rehab, and redo leases for the people that are in the building. I have no problem doing that, and I'm sure they will not balk at that either, to have, because it's posted. The, their licenses are posted where they perform in the room in which they use.
So then, John, with, with the, the, the language and the ordinance and all, do, would we go after without knowing at all the massage therapist and the landlord?
I would just be going after the business itself, the massage therapist. It would be, they'd be the one who would have the permit, you know, so the, the business itself. So with the, with.
Because the reason I ask.
The idea being is that, you know, we have to have these requirements, like say for the people to give us proof of their licenses and whatnot, because there's some people out there clearly that do not. I understand that, you know, you, you indicated as a landlord, you know, you require this information, but, you know, we might have a landlord who's a little bit less than, you know, attentive and a little bit less stringent in their requirements. So I believe, I believe there is a happy medium, you know, to be found here.
I think this sole proprietorship that Bloomington has implemented is really an awesome way to meet the needs of everybody. A person like that has, that already is licensed, that they just do an affidavit, and then it's there and it says that's it, and they have it on file. And landlords don't have to go through that. They have now filed with the city, so the city knows that they're operating. And I feel like it's a win-win, and I, we've got the documentation and the language, which we would love to share with you, to kind of get those, like, questions you have, like, well, what if? Well, yeah, I'm from Lincoln and you can get ahold of me, but what if somebody's from Chicago or another state and it's a problem? I get that. So how do we, how do we deal with that and have to be able to anticipate every type of situation that will come up? And I think this is one of the ways that for the legal people, it isn't cumbersome and it isn't a burden for them to operate like that.
Ms. McCullin?
The one thing, when I was reading through the Bloomington one, is you have to be a sole proprietor, no employees, contractors or other persons working under or with them. So are the people in your building working?
They're sole providers. They do their own thing. I have a lease with each one individually.
So do we know that most of the people who would fall under this are sole proprietors, probably don't have employees or?
The ones I know that are performing here operate that way.
I can only assume so. I think, I think the places, the large establishments like Massage Envy, I think, have employees of a management system, if I'm correct about that. And we don't have any, anything like that here.
Right. So the, the one in question from January, that would not fall under sole proprietor in the way that that was structured?
It didn't fall under anything.
So there is a happy medium, it sounds like.
So you have multiple massage people in your, in your business, and they're each, so like they're all in the same space?
They all have different rooms.
But they all have.
And they all have different, like, I have one that's in there, they've been in four or five years. She's in the same place. The Reiki and the other people, they'll, they may switch out rooms. But for the massage people, that's their space. The other room that I have available, that was earmarked for massage as well. So that would be the only space they would have. We, we, I can make it so that they cannot sublease, so that no one else can come in under them. I mean, we have done that in the past. If you've got two massage therapists and they don't do this full-time, they do it as extra income, and they'll use it Mondays, Fridays, and they'll have a person come in Wednesday and use their room and their facility. If that's a concern, we can stop that as well. It doesn't happen all the time, but, you know, they do share space or have shared space in the past. Right now, not.
So maybe this is a question for John. Can you explain the rationale? Like, I'm looking through this, the need for us to ask for a drawing or a floor plan, and what each room's designated for? What, what drove that?
I just, like I said, I based it upon when I looked at other municipalities that did it. And like I said, that was, I indicated it was in-depth. We, we had a situation, this is where regulation comes from, you know, where we had a massage, I guess you could say establishment, so that was set up, that was kind of haphazardly thrown together, very unhygienic and kind of ridiculous would probably be, not quite the appropriate word, but it was beyond that. So that's where these things kind of originated from, you know. What, what are you contemplating putting in, you know, your respective business here, you know, to make sure that it's hygienic, you know, and quote-unquote up to code?
Ms. McCullin and then Mr. Bateman?
One of the things about that is that almost all of them that I read have that in there, the ones that I've read from other places, they have that, that language in there. So I don't think that's something really, it's real unusual. But the other thing, just in talking about the Bloomington one, the space is not advertised or operated as a multi-practitioner establishment clinic or wellness center. So that might affect also how you, how you talk about it.
It's a collaboration of like-minded people. It's not considered, I think I did say, I don't know that I said wellness center. Did I? If I did, yes.
Like that. So that would be, that would be something that if that was discussed, you might have to think about that too.
Absolutely. Thank you, yes.
Mr. Bateman?
I, I phoned Mrs. Lee Joyce this afternoon. The two main concerns I have is under the exemptions of E and F. Home-based massage services provided by a person who is duly licensed by the state of Illinois. In the way this is reading, or massage services offered or conducted other than locations from the massage, this is making them exempt. To me, these are the two most important people that should have to come to the city with their license, their state license, and say, I, I want to be a massage therapist in the city of Lincoln. Here is my state license, because there probably is a lot of times where, you know, physical therapy and stuff, where they would travel to someone's home or whatever to, to do a massage. If you're going to let those, to me, that's just asking for improper usage, if they're allowed to travel around and just come in, set up shop in this person's house and then leave. To me, those are the two most important ones that I want them to bring their state-accredited license, had the background checks, fingerprinted. It is correct, it's every two years, to be certified. Those are the ones that I want paperwork from the state. Those are the ones that I want paperwork from the state and then the city saying, you know, he- here's your license to operate inside the city of Lincoln. Those, that's my biggest concern is E and F, the exemptions under that.
Mr. Barrett.
John, do you know, does a health department, does a health department get involved in in a wellness center or a place where uh they would go in and and look for like, make sure the establishment is is clean?
Um, when I looked at it, um, when I had, can you, well, Joyce probably can speak to that better. But um it was my understanding there are other, there are like the health department, there are regs, like there are agencies, there's a mechanism in place to have um any concerns um checked out. And I apologize, I did have them um written down specifically and um I'm not finding that.
The the only reference of the health department I make is that they will provide access to the health department if the health department wants to come onto their property and uh, you know, inspect it if necessary. Just that that they won't deny access to them.
They they um in the online, what I found too was again, the background check for um the um massage therapists to get their license and then there is a board that um that um is available that you can make um inquiries to that they would um investigate if there were any concerns. That's where I found that at, but I I really can't speak to that in more than what I found online. But I would, I would think the health department or other places, I mean, if it's a bathroom or, I mean, there's no food there. There's a kitchen and specifically in our building, there's a kitchen area there, there's a place for a refrigerator. And then the rest of them are rooms that are being occupied by different people that have different leases, so.
Any other questions? Okay.
Again, I'm just asking to be to be tabled to give us an opportunity to communicate some some more on this subject. Again, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, uh next speaker up is Joyce Leesman and she would like to talk with the council regarding the proposed ordinance as well.
First of all, I apologize for being a little croaky. I'm getting over some um bronchitis. I sent a uh an email out to the council several days ago. Mr. Barrett, yours came back to me, so I don't know if you have seen that as undeliverable. I don't know what that's about. Yeah, so I don't know if you've seen that or not, but I do have a copy for if you would like it. Um, I'm Joyce Leesman. I'm a licensed massage therapist and I have practiced out of Springfield Clinic for the past fourteen years. I provide therapeutic uh massage therapy to people who are trying to avoid surgery or post operations or uh just for trying to be healthier and well-being. I do a lot of education in in addition to providing a massage. Um, I do a lot of bodywork. Uh, the six modalities that I have um become accredited in and have extensive training in, uh there's only one that falls under the um umbrella of being a licensed massage um therapist. Um, I would do want to just take a moment to address a few of the questions that have come up that um. If I worked in a chiropractic office or any place else, I still am required to be licensed. So Julianne does do massage therapy, but it's under her chiropractic license. It's not under um anything else, so we are all licensed professionals. We've all gone through extensive training. We've all gone through background checks. So um with that in mind, I'm just going to read my statement this evening to you. So I appreciate the council's attention and efforts to keep illicit businesses operating under the guise of massage therapy out of Lincoln. However, I do not believe adding a local licensing process to already licensed massage therapists is the answer, nor will it have the desired effect. A licensed massage therapist has already been through a vigorous course of education with a minimum of five hundred hours. Most accredited schools have seven hundred or more hours. This is in anatomy, pathology, kinesiology, business practices, it's quite extensive. We also have gone through a federal and state background check, which includes fingerprinting, an exam equivalent to state boards used by other licensing professionals. There's also an application process and fees for licensure and the license is good for two years. At renewal time, the licensee must submit a renewal application, which includes questions regarding any complaints or investigations, arrests or anything against my license. I have to submit proof of twenty-five hours of continuing education, which includes issues such as domestic violence, sexual harassment and ethics. I also have to pay a renewal fee. The state of Illinois has an investigative arm as well under the Illinois Department of Financial and Professional Regulation. We are well-regulated by the state of Illinois. In addition, many licensed massage therapists are members of professional organizations, which also have additional requirements and fees. The proposed ordinance as written singles out licensed massage therapists versus addressing illicit businesses. It also provides for some exemptions that should cause alarm, such as home-based massage therapists and services provided away from massage establishment. It refers to the mayor's ability to provide an exemption to a person convicted of a felony if certain conditions are met. There may be some exemptions to state licensure, but I don't believe being a convicted felon is one of them. This is a very complicated situation, but over-regulating legitimate licensed massage therapists will not solve the problem of illicit businesses. It only adds another layer of government oversight to an already law-abiding professionals. The Association of Body Workers and Massage Professionals, which is a nationally recognized professional organization, has studied and been involved in the protection of massage therapists as it relates to human trafficking. It has taken the stance that local ordinances are intended to give law enforcement extra tools to combat human trafficking, but in practice, they do little to stop crime as these businesses don't function legitimately anyway. State laws give state, give law enforcement the authority to crack down on illegal businesses. Human trafficking is a law enforcement issue and should not be placed on the back of legitimate licensed professionals. In closing, at a minimum, I would ask tonight that this issue be tabled for further research and discussion. Ideally, I would ask that the council exempt sole proprietor massage therapy business from further licensure. Thank you. Questions?
Mr. Hovlitt.
So I'll just have a follow-up statement in regards that, I mean, we could certainly table it. The intent is not, we're not going after licensed people who are licensed. We're going after people who open up businesses that are not licensed. So before, when we had this situation earlier, we would have to go through, we had to get warrants. We'd have to get court orders to shut down. So we would have to have a burden of proof that place would stay open longer than it probably should have stayed open because we had to go through this rigmarole investigation, they had to do sting operations, okay? The intent of this, in which it does as written, which could be fluffed additionally, is that it gives the the police the authority to come onto the premises without having to acquire a warrant to inspect the property. It ensures that everything is on the up and up for the businesses that open and they're open and they're operating legitimate establishments. It prevents, it also enables us to, instead of having to get a court order to shut somebody down, that we can just do it, because they they say they did not get the license slash permit, that they can be shut down, okay? Without having to to go through all the additional rigmarole, so it does give the police additional additional means. In regards to the state licenses, um throughout the process of dealing with, I had to contact the IDFPR. And uh they expressed frustration, if I can put words in my mouth, try not to, but they expressed frustration because they could not. They had a mandate to not go after people who don't have licenses or revoking licenses. Uh, because they, I believe, I there's a suspicion that these people were victims themselves, maybe of human trafficking. So therefore, they just, they just don't. So it's incumbent upon us to do something if we don't want to see these places here. Like I said, we're not, the intent is not to go after, providing your, providing your um proof of uh your your, I guess you could say your license and the permit fee is not that lo- large of an ask. Everything else could is negotiable, you know, in regards to this. But those are the mid, those are the the big large tenets is to prevent something from what happened earlier here to not happen again and that requires regulation.
Mr. Bateman.
So in my conversation with Mrs. Leesman, I kind of explained that purpose of this, like many of our ordinances, is not to, not so much to regulate, but to um establish what John just explained, a a system to where if something goes awry, we can close it down faster, if not immediately, than dragging it out forever in a court process. Which is why the fee is structured at twenty-five dollars. It's it's, the city's not making money off of it. It's just a processing fee for the paperwork. But as I explained to her, what that also does is no different than the solicitors licenses that we have on the city website. I don't know how many of you guys get the phone calls, but the Bateman household, we get messaged all the time of someone soliciting on my front porch and we can now direct them and and a few people in social media have learned to use the app and explained how you can just immediately go to the city website, find the people that are licensed to solicit. And then the police department can take action immediately if these people are not licensed to solicit or working outside the the realm of their permit. So I do believe this ordinance needs some some wording changes and some work, but I'm not against doing it, even for sole proprietors, because i- if uh if you had a license from the state and and you offer services where you'll come to the house and do massages and and stuff, at least if that person calls to see if you're legit, we have, we can tell them, yes, they've been through the background check. They are legit, they do have a state license and and you know, then then they can operate inside the city. You know, so that's, you know, I I agree with what we're trying to do here is to try to protect people and try to streamline being able to stop the illicit businesses verse legitimate ones. I know it seems like when you're legitimate, you gotta jump through more hoops, but some sometimes it is for the better.
So is your recommendation that we're taking everybody who's has a license and we're just gonna, we're gonna keep track of everybody and their license?
No, if you're operating in the city of Lincoln as a massage therapist, you would have to get a permit from the city to do so and prove that you're a licensed massage therapist. Not just go on the interwebs and say, I'm opening up a massage parlor at my residence, please get ahold of me.
Do, I'm sorry, do we do that for home healthcare?
I I'm afraid we're we're targeting just one group. There's a lot of other licensed people.
Licensed through the Department of.
Uh, there's a list. I mean, you you know what the list is, because it's in the exemptions of people who have a professional license.
Posting that they have a legitimate license in a business, you're gonna have to start posting a whole lot of other people who also have legitimate license in businesses in town.
I don't know that the idea was to post those things, sorry.
Okay. Go ahead.
Apologize for.
It was just becoming a free-for-all, so, sorry.
Completely understand and I didn't help the situation, so I apologize.
Go ahead, sir.
I I believe we have several different types of licenses and the city clerk can speak to this. I think photographers even have to have a license in the city, is that correct?
Used to. We kind of dropped it because it was one of those that, yeah.
Okay.
But we do have a lot.
Yeah, I mean, our our liquor licenses, you have to, you have to show proof that you got a state license in order to get a license here. And the way our ordinances have written, they have actually empowered us to, I've made calls to the chief and said, hey, there's what appears to be illegal activity happening at X location, can you send someone down to investigate? Sometimes it's warranted, sometimes it's not, but they have that ability to at least ask the questions. Um, how long did that process take last time, earlier this year, between you and Mr. Hovlitt?
I can't remember the date that we received a court order to actually force the shutdown of the business, but I would estimate that it was March at least, so.
I think it was around March.
Investigation began in January. I think it was around March sometime during that month that that we actually put the shutdown.
And I got, I got notified um because the operators were posting things on Craigslist. Um, some pretty provocative stuff, quite honestly, and that's why we did the sting, to see if there was any truth to the matter, which we later found out there was. And without getting into the weeds of that case, it wasn't just the person that questionably could have been being trafficked. It was the individual that would bring that individual to town. They weren't even from here. They would come in from Springfield, I believe, drop them off and come back twelve hours later. I believe the confrontations that you guys had more so was with that individual and not the person working, correct?
Correct. The the employees that were providing the massages uh were non-confrontational. The the owner of the building itself was a Lincoln resident, but was an over-the-road truck driver, so he didn't spend a lot of time in town, but that was the, that was the problem, was dealing with him.
So I I agree with all of you who have spoke tonight. I think we need to take a look at the ordinance. We need to figure out how we don't hurt the people that are legitimately trying to do business, but still give us the ability to do what we need to do to protect the city. And I think there's a balance to be had. Um, this was a first stab at it and, you know, you don't get it right the first time always, right? So uh it would be up to the council if they decide that they want to table it, but I think it would be warranted to at least look at it closer, have some discussions with those people that are in that industry and then let's come up with something that makes sense. That would be my opinion.
Can I just make one comment?
You may.
What you said. With that situation, it would not have made any difference whether or not a license, whether I was licensed with this with the city or not. It would not have made one difference, make one minute difference to having to deal with that situation, because that's a law enforcement issue. It is not a licensed massage therapist issue. It's not my issue. I shouldn't be gathered into this issue with the city trying to deal with illicit businesses. You have a mechanism, you used it. It does take a while because that's the system. Having me or any other licensed massage therapist in town, having to go through this process, pay our twenty-five dollars, produce this, whatever you finally come up with, is not going to make a difference to whether or not these places try to come in. Lincoln is a small town. We're gonna know it pretty quickly, I think. Decatur, Bloomington, Springfield, Quincy, Largier, Peoria, they all have significant issues, totally different issue than what is going on in Lincoln. And I'm just saying that by dealing with individual licensing um massage therapists is not gonna have an impact on whether or not these people try to come in. And if you need to deal with something, deal something with legally, with the laws and and leave the license who have gone through everything we can possibly jump through with the state and leave us out of it and deal with the issue and not try to include people who are operating legitimate businesses. I mean, Springfield Clinic, if this goes into effect as written, I don't think I'll have a job at Springfield Clinic any longer because I don't think they're gonna want the police department to be able to wall-sin or health department or whatever other governing body um to take a look at the space that I rent from them. I am not their employee. I was for ten years. Last five years, I've been self-employed and I rent space from them. I don't think as a business owner that they're going to want to have these regulations put on them as well. So it's it's, like I said, it's a very complicated, multi-layered issue. So it's, it's, like I said, it's a very complicated, multi-layered issue. And I, if we could just slow it down, take a look, pick it apart, really figure out what the issue is and deal with that and let the rest of it alone, so.
Yeah, I thi- I think there's, there's an opportunity to not so tightly couple those of you with the problem that we had. But I will say though, there, there is a mechanism for working through that, but the licensing part for the city of Lincoln, it actually helps us deal with problems because like, for instance, solicitors, and that's not even comparable to what we're talking about. But as Mr. Bateman said, if he gets a call and somebody says they're from, let's say Apex Energy, let's say, I'm just throwing a name out. And we actually, uh, Ms. Bateman's office, we have a list on the city website. You can go out to the website and if Apex is not on that list, the next step is to call law enforcement and have a conversation with them. It helps us understand who's operating in the city legally and illegally. Um, there's still processes we have to go through, but yeah. So again, I think maybe we're tight, too tightly coupled on, with this ordinance. We can figure it out. Um, you can, but you'll have to come up to the microphone so others can hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanna say too, um, I'm supporting them, but, um, my husband is a retired law enforcement officer. I've worked my whole life in the court system. I understand the need for an ordinance. Um, I understand that it is cumbersome now and there should be a mechanism in place that they, things can get shut down quickly. And so in that respect, we may have a different opinion about that, but I'm on board with that because I do think there does need to be an ordinance in place. And again, that's my idea about that sole proprietorship that gives that. We're gonna have it, we're gonna have it. So that is a good way as a compromise for all of us to be able to live with what's going on and gives law enforcement the teeth they need to, to deal with it. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. Um, Ms. McClellan, did you have something you still wanted to, the question?
I just, I was just gonna say exactly what you said. It's really about the health of the city. What can we do to make sure that our, that everybody's safe and everybody's healthy?
I totally agree.
Yeah. So I think we agree on a lot of things, you know, it's just finding the places where there's friction.
I mean, to your point about Springfield Clinic, we don't want to hurt existing businesses. That's, that's not good for any of us. So we'll see what the council does. I suspect I know which way this is going, but, um, we'll have other conversations.
Thank you.
Ms. McClellan?
But I just do wanna add that I think it's really important. The registration is really important. There's lots and lots and lots of businesses that are, that are registered and it would work for you too. I think it would work for the massage therapist to, to be.
There's pros and cons. I don't, I, yeah, I, that I, piece I can live with. As long as it's clear that when you are a licensed massage therapist and you are operating a legitimate business, that we should not be either through language or ordinances or practices or whatever, be lumped in with illicit businesses that are clearly operating under the guise of massage therapy. They are clear, and we know it. The minute they come into town, I mean, this wasn't any big secret. We all knew it. Well, it depends on what circles you run in, not, you know, I knew it. And I'm like, what are they doing? They need to shut that down now. So, and they did, so, thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Okay. Okay, um, anybody else that'd like to speak tonight under public participation? Okay. Okay, moving on to the first item on the agenda tonight, that is the consent agenda. This evening, it consists of five A payment of bills and five B approval of minutes, October twentieth, twenty twenty-five, regular city council meeting. October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, committee of the whole meeting, and November third, twenty twenty-five, regular city council meeting. Their motion approved.
Second.
Alderman Clemmons made the motion, Alderman Downs, second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Ms. McClellan?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Hey, the next item up is item number six, ordinance creating section three dash twenty-seven of the Lincoln City Code.
Make a motion to table until at least the next meeting.
Second.
Alderman Clemmons made the motion to table. Alderwoman O'Donohue, second. Discussion? Roll call to table this item, please.
Was that done correctly?
I think so.
Yes, you'd be moving, you'd be voting to table it.
Okay, so not, okay. I thought we had to amend to table or whatever.
Well, you would be, you'd be tabled, you'd be tabled to the next regular meeting, but if we wanted to have this as a discussion item for the next cow, we can always put it as a discussion item for the next cow.
It'll stay on the agenda until it's removed from the table. Okay, so roll call, please.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullin?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Okay. Next up is item number seven, approval of bid from Johnco Construction for the construction of a community pavilion at a cost not to exceed three hundred eighty-six thousand, five hundred fourteen dollars. Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Downs made the motion. Alderman Bateman, second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Ms. McCullin?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Hey, next item is item eight A, city treasurer's report for October twenty twenty-five. Treasurer Konzo?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, you've all received copies of the report. I'll just go through some of the highlights of it. You'll notice the, the gap there, uh, between what we had in the general fund last year as opposed to what we have this year has, has gone down, which is good. We were up over five hundred thousand dollars there. We're now down to about a hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars. So we wanna see that we're going in the right direction. One time we, well, as you can see, a year ago, we were at five, five million. We were a little higher than that. Uh, in the following months, ideally, we should be at about twelve million. We're not gonna get there overnight, but we wanna keep moving in that direction. If you look at the distributions that we received, the, the sales tax and the municipal sales tax, uh, the, the non-room, non-home rule sales tax, uh, receipts, I think were very good for the last month, as were the state income tax. So if you look at them on a, each of the tables that are attached, you'll see, you'll see the difference there. We were, year-to-date, we're about ninety-five thousand over what we had been a year ago in the state income tax. Keep in mind, uh, though this, a lot of times has to do with when, uh, people pay their taxes, it has to do with collections. But anyway, that's certainly a good indication. Same thing with the municipal sales tax there, uh, we've not over by that much, but we're, we're up year-over-year about fifty-eight thousand dollars, which we like to see. And then the non-home rule sales tax, uh, there too, we're, uh, you'll see that, you know, there's an increase over where we were a year ago. The, one thing, the replacement tax there, now, you see that is down considerably. We were expecting that. So we did not project that to increase. We projected that decrease based on the information that we received from the Illinois Municipal League, which, uh, told us to expect this to happen. So we did project that to be lower, but it's still, you know, it's still a substantial decrease from where we were. A year ago, we were, uh, this is calendar year, not fiscal year, but we were at five hundred and fifty-one thousand a year ago. So that's a, we're at four, a little over four hundred thousand now. They were looking at the motor fuel tax, we're almost exactly where we were. So, you know, keeping, you know, I've said this before, increasing the taxes on it, you know, doesn't necessarily mean we're going to have more revenue from it since it's, the taxes assessed based on the number of gallons purchased. And you can see there, uh, they're not really, if you look at like, we're at two hundred and twenty-two thousand on the, the initial tax. The motor fuel tax, uh, a year ago, we're at two hundred and twenty thousand. Now this, and this is based on statewide sales of, of motor fuel tax, not what's sold here locally. So if we start to see the prices come down in Illinois as they have in other states, uh, we might see more people buying more gasoline. See what happens in the future. We, we've had years in the past where we thought that, uh, it was gonna go the other way and, you know, it would increase. And it did, but it didn't increase as badly as we thought, so maybe we'll start to see it decline. We start, and i- if it does, people will buy more gasoline generally. And you'll see the, the revenue from that source increase. Uh, video gaming, just, you know, a little bit ahead of, of, uh, where we were. Uh, if you look at August, we were about fifteen hundred dollars, uh, over where we were previous, uh, previous August. And if you look here, each month, uh, throughout the year, it appears, you know, that it's very, very similar to where we were. And that's all I have unless there's other questions.
Chuck, can you elaborate? I was gonna call you earlier and, um, I didn't have an opportunity. Can you share any insight into some recent legislation that was passed in the veto session? Where there's discussion about, um, less money going to downstate Illinois for roads as opposed to going up north? And is that gonna impact our motor fuel tax or how will that impact us?
It won't affect, it, it, it won't affect the basic motor fuel tax, but that, that, uh, extra part that we get that was supposed to pay for roads that you see described here in the report. It will affect that because what the, and I don't know what the status of that legislation is, and I should probably try to find out. But that legislation was designed to take part of that extra distribution and use that for mass transit purposes in the, in the Chicago area and Cook County and some of the surrounding, how much? Eighty?
Eighty-five percent of the tax will go to Chicago.
But has that been, that hasn't been?
I think it's just waiting on the governor's signature.
I don't think he's signed it.
Oh, I think he.
So only.
Yeah, that's not.
Downstate gets all the potholes.
So what, what I'm trying to get ahead of or start thinking about is what's this gonna do to our budget next year?
Well, it's gonna reduce the amount, uh, the motor fuel tax, you know, substantially if that's signed into law at eighty-five percent.
That's what I was.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's, now, for years, we didn't have that distribution and always just had the original motor fuel tax. Uh, but we also have the non-home rule sales tax, which is used for roads. But yeah, this'll certainly have an impact on what we can do. There's no question about that.
More to come then.
And they seem to, and not only like to spend the, all the money in the Chicago area, but they, they, many of the people in the legislature and in this, this governor's administration don't like for people to drive cars. And it's pretty clear they would rather have everybody on mass transit, whether it's practical or not.
If we could just get mass transit here. There you go.
Well, even, yeah.
Can't even get a cab company.
Necessarily a good idea to force people to use it.
I mean, you can if you'd like. It's, it's probably not good on the backend, I'd say.
Well, they did have at one time horse-drawn, uh, street cars, and I've seen pictures of those in the maps where those ran. Ran one of, a lot, I'm not saying we shouldn't do that.
I'm like, this conversation's going backwards.
Yeah. But they did, uh, tracks that.
Okay. Thank you for answering that question. I appreciate it. Anything else for Mr. Konzo? Mr. Landers?
Yeah, one thing I'd like to mention is that we don't use our motor fuel tax extensively for street repair and street work. That's paid out of our general budget, so it's, it's not gonna have a huge, it'll have an impact for sure because we use that motor fuel tax money more for maintenance and other things. But as far as our resurfacing projects and things like that, although we do have a couple of big projects coming up that are gonna take a lot of money, it's, it doesn't necessarily hurt us that bad, you know, as far as our resurfacing programs.
Okay. Thank you. All right, next up is eight B, city clerk's report for October twenty twenty-five. Ms. Bateman?
In the month of October, October, we received two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-eight cents of sewer receipts, which in that amount, we received forty-seven thousand, two twenty-nine, forty-five from both prisons in the month of October.
Any questions for Ms. Bateman? Okay, thank you. All right, um, next up is the department head reports for October twenty twenty-five. Those are either on file or will be shortly. We're also still working on getting some of that information out on the website. So if you're looking for specific information, um, just let us know and we'll be glad to get it to you. Okay, next up is item number nine A, approval of sewer construction on Campus View Drive in an amount not to exceed one million, one hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars. An authorization for the mayor to accept and sign the lowest qualified bid received.
Second.
Alderwoman O'Donohue made the motion. Alderman Downs, second. Discussion? Mr. Bateman?
I just wanna reiterate, this is for the one, two, and three hundred block of Campus View. There is some people in this room that live on Campus View, but it doesn't affect us. So I just want my vote to reflect that so someone doesn't think I'm overstepping my bounds.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullin?
Abstain.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Next item is nine B, approval of the city of Lincoln, twenty twenty-six holiday schedule.
Second.
Alderwoman O'Donohue made the motion. Alderman Anders- Anderson, second. Roll call, please. Oh, any discussion? Okay, now roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Abstain.
Ms. McCullin?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Yes.
Okay, next is, next is nine C, approval of the city of Lincoln, twenty twenty-six meeting schedule.
Hope to approve.
Second.
Alderwoman McClellan made the motion. Alderman Downs, second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Ms. McCullin? Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Next item is nine D, approval of the lease purchase of a twenty twenty-six international dump truck and snow and ice control equipment at a cost not to exceed two hundred thirty thousand, two hundred forty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. Alderman Anderson made the motion. Alderman Clemmons, second. Discussion? Roll call, please. Oh, Alderman Parrott.
Uh, well, does the ice control equipment, will that go on the, uh, the dump trunk? Yes, yep. It's your snowplow. Okay. Your, your truck bed, your salt sprouter, your pre-waits, pre-wet system. And all that is, is necessary. That's all part of it, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullin?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Next item is nine E, approval of the hiring of a police officer to fill a vacancy, which will occur on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Alderman Bateman made the motion. Alderman Downs, second. Okay, there was a typo as Ms. O'Donohue's face. She caught that. Um, it needs to read June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. So we'll need a amendment.
Can I ask a question?
You, you may.
Okay. So as it reads, then we're filling the vacancy on June thirtieth, but aren't you wanting to fill it before that?
I, yeah, I was gonna answer a few questions that were posed to me here recently, uh, but I, do you wanna do the?
Go ahead and answer her questions now, if you'd like, chief.
Yes, that is correct. I know the vacancy is going to occur in June. That's when, that's when the officer is retiring. Will no longer come back to work for us. June thirtieth is the date that was written on there. Really, I can't predict exactly what day it's going to be because that officer may choose to use an emergency vacation or personal day, say if a pipe breaks at home or something like that. And he may then not be able to take off at a specific date. So we don't know. What I wanna be prepared for is to, to have his vacancy filled with a trained police officer. Yes, that is correct. I know the vacancy is going to occur in June. That's when, that's when the officer is retiring, will no longer come back to work for us. June thirtieth is the date that was written on there. Really, I can't predict exactly what day it's going to be, because that officer may choose to use an emergency vacation or personal day, say if a pipe breaks at home or something like that, and he may then not be able to take off at a specific date. So we don't know. What I want to be prepared for is to, to have his vacancy filled with a trained police officer in June, so that we don't have a gap in services.
Alderman Clemens, and then Alderman Parrott.
Can we, can we just amend that to say, uh, at June of two thousand twenty-six?
That was going to be the recommendation.
But does it need to say June at all?
I was going to speak a little bit more, but I.
Chief?
So, um, what I really want to discuss is, uh, creating a, a policy or a practice that allows a department to fill a vacancy that we know we're going to have well ahead of time. So specifically retirements. If, if we wait till a guy that's retiring, a guy or a gal that's retiring is completely off the books, like I spoke about before, depending on the qualifications of the candidate who will replace them, it can create a gap in services anywhere from three months to nine months, depending on who's being hired and what training they need. That can be very burdensome, burdensome to the department and to the city, the citizens, if we don't have the amount of police officers that we should have to provide the services that, that we need. And in recent times, we've seen more, uh, more than a single vacancy at, at once. So, uh, a long time ago, we, we had a lot of applicants, had a deep list, and people stayed for a very long time, usually till retirement, and you knew when that was coming. So you'd only have kind of one vacancy at a time, and that's a little easier to handle. And if you have multiple vacancies, guys getting injured, guys leaving for other places. So I'm just trying to reduce that gap in services by, uh, a new practice in, in hiring.
Alderman Parrott?
So I could see the, the fire chief as well, uh, needing something like that too, which I don't disagree with. I guess my question would be, um, how far in advance would, would you anticipate needing to, to hire someone, um, go through the process, and then would you say, okay, um, we would need you, you know, three months before the retirement on the books? Because it's going to cost more money in, in salaries and such, and you'd have to budget for something like that. But I can't see hiring somebody six months, nine months, you know, and, and I just, I don't, I can't see that happening. Uh, what's your recommendation?
I respect your opinion on that. On the flip side, the cost savings is if I am paying longstanding officers, sergeants, corporals, overtime to cover the gap until I get a guy out of training, it's going to cost more than what the salary of a new officer who's already trained during that period of time is.
Okay, so, so you wouldn't anticipate needing another car or anything like that for, for, for a person that might be on for nine months without a, you know, because you might have someone that comes in with all the training already?
Correct.
And you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have that necessarily.
For instance, uh, in the certain situation that we are now, I know that we have an officer retiring, and he's going to start taking his time off in June, retiring in August. The next person who is eligible to be hired from our current list is already a trained police officer. No academy requirement there. So you're reducing at least sixteen weeks of when I would have to hire that person. So in this case, our field training period is twelve weeks, approximately three months, right? I would want to hire that person three months ahead of when I know this retirement is going to occur in June. So I wouldn't extend that unreasonably. I would only hire a person with enough time to get them trained and ready for the street.
Right.
Fill the shoes of the guy who's no longer going to be there.
Makes sense.
Alderman Bateman?
I would like to amend my motion to say, which will fill the vacancy in twenty twenty-six with no specific date. Is that okay with you? I mean, we're talking last, a little over a month.
Okay, so Alderman Bateman has made a motion to amend. Is there a second? Alderman Clemens will second the amended motion. Okay, any other discussion on the amendment? Okay, roll call on the amendment, please.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson? Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. O'Donohue?
Abstain.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullen?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Okay, um, any other discussion on the agenda item as amended? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullen?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
So then will we work on, on doing some sort of ordinance then for the police and the fire department? So?
So, I would recommend that the chief work with Mr. Hoblit and whoever he feels is appropriate to draft a policy to be brought back before the council for consideration.
Yeah, as the ordinance reads currently, it just says that the, the council, at its discretion from time to time, will choose the number of officers or firefighters or whichever department employee they need. So it's discretionary for you all. And I wouldn't ever want to take it too far. I, I just, I recommend a, a practice or a policy, not, not an ordinance resolution.
Mr. Bateman?
Not, not to cut you off at the knees, but I know councils change, and maybe that's why you want a policy, because councils change. But obviously, the eight people sitting here, more than, in just the years I've sat here, we've, you know, we listen to what you're selling, and we, and we've obliged by it. So as long as it's not an unreasonable request, it's up to you if you want a policy changed, not knowing the council you're going to be dealt with. But I think at this point, you shouldn't lose any sleep over the fact that if you need an officer and explain why, that, that we won't oblige, whether it be police, fire, or whatever.
Yeah, I appreciate the respect you all show us for that.
Ms. Bateman?
So even if there is a policy, would he still have to come to the council to have it approved? Or can he just go ahead and hire? Even though it's a policy it puts in place?
We're at twenty-eight. It, it, we would be at twenty-nine for just that training period, that short time. If all of a sudden you notice thirty-three out there, I think I'd probably be in trouble.
Well, and, and I think that the policy probably needs to be cross-department, because, you know, Ty will also tell you, we've had, we have issues in both departments where, well, more specifically with your departments, where we sent somebody to academy, and they either got, in the beginning, washed out, or they washed out later on. So now you're back at square one, trying to fill that. So trying to gauge that and give yourself enough time seems like a logical decision if you're trying to accomplish what you are with this proposed policy. It, I mean, feel free to say otherwise.
That's very correct, sir.
Okay, any other discussion on that topic? Okay, next item up is item number F, approval of the issuance of a credit card from Heartland Bank to Mayor Tracy Welch with a credit limit of five thousand dollars. Motion to approve?
Second.
Alderman Downs made the motion. Alderwoman O'Donohue, second. Discussion? Alderman Parrott?
Do you have one now, anywhere?
I do not.
Did we ever? Did the mayor ever have one?
I don't know if previous mayors did, but I've never have.
There's not any recent ones.
Yeah, the, as I explained last week, the request has come in because we're doing a lot more activity than we normally do in the mayor's office with the new bank building and trying to get that up and operational. So it'll help us be more efficient in trying to get things done. Same responsibilities that every department has. It's the same limit as every department has. Um, I just think that that will help us move along.
I thought we had one already.
Yeah, have not. And I've talked with Ms. Bateman and Mr. Konzo about, you know, proper storage and securing of it and authorized spending and all of that stuff. So we have a plan in place. Okay, uh, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm all messed up here. Okay. I'm sorry, this whole thing's messed up. Mr. Bateman?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullen?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Okay, that brings us down to announcements. Um, I've got a couple. Uh, well, go ahead, Mr. Bateman.
Well, I didn't know if anybody noticed, but we had a special guest watching the meeting tonight. It looks like Santa Claus has been on the entire meeting.
Oh, yeah. Mr. McCoy? Yes, he's in his, he is in his, um, festive attire here. So, um, okay, announcements. Uh, you should have received an email from Miss Matoco about the Christmas parade, and we are looking for a judge. We're looking for three. Uh, I understand if council members would like to participate in the float that, um, or the golf cart and walking and handout candy. Ms. Bateman arranges for us each year. So, um, please feel free to do whichever, but if somebody is interested, um, let me know. Would love to have somebody judge. Uh, I brought in the trophies today that Mr. McCoy made, and there's three of them. Uh, the red portion on top is actually glow-in-the-dark, and there's a light inside of each one of them. So it's a nice little, it's a nice little, um, trophy to take away. In the past, they've done cash prizes. I think, you know, this is kind of a cool change.
Tracy, is there still need for, um, helping with, at the depot?
There will be a need if someone would like to help with, um, hot chocolate and cookies and stuff for Santa when he gets there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll help you with that.
Okay, all right. Okay, um, anything else on that? Okay, uh, the next item is coffee with the mayor. Our next one's not until January tenth of twenty-six, but I wanted to open it up to the council. If there is somebody that hasn't done it or hasn't done it in a while, okay, Mr. Anderson? Okay, all right. We're trying to get this, um, all of these participants together quicker. And department heads be thinking about, if you have capacity in, um, in January on the tenth, I know Wes is putting his head down. You can tell me in department head meeting this week. Okay, um, thank you, Stan. And then last thing I wanted to point out, obviously, we have a vacancy in Ward Two. If you know of somebody in Ward Two, or if you're in Ward Two and are interested in speaking with us about it, let me know. Uh, I have gone through the list of registered Republicans. To be clear, we go through this every time, but because David was a elected Republican, we have to fill that seat with a Republican for the remainder of his term, which will, they'll be due whoever is seated in the next upcoming election for council. Was it next year? Twenty-seven? So it'll start next year. Um, so, um, just want to keep everybody apprised on that. I know we have a time limit on that. Mr. Hoblit, was it, is it ninety days?
At least either sixty or, or ninety days, but.
Yeah, I hope to have that done before that. So.
Y'all would.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'll open it up to others. Anybody have an announcement that they'd like to share? Chief Meister?
Real brief one. Uh, the GoGov app, it's great, uh, specifically when it's used for ordinance violations, you know, leaves, grass, trash, dilapidated vehicles, things like that. I, again, received a crime report on it. It's not monitored twenty-four seven. Uh, this, this incident was a burglary to a garage. Uh, I reached out to, to the person who initiated the ticket. But I just want to remind everyone, if you have a crime in progress, that's a nine-one-one or a, or a dispatch non-emergency line call. So please, uh, only use that for, for minor violations like ordinance violations, not crimes in progress.
Okay, anything else? All right, if there is nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Alderman Anders, Alderman Anderson made the motion. Alderman Clemens, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This meeting is adjourned at seven twenty P M.